Okay, I think it is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We always start off with our pledge. It looks like our flag is over here. So if we could stand, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's it? All right, thank you. Righty. We'll go ahead and go to item B, approval for a flexible agenda. I need a motion made.
I'll make a motion to approve a flexible agenda.
Okay, motion made. Seconded by trustee Jackson. Is there any public comment on this? Being none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just note that unless I raise an exception, all of my votes will be in the positive unless I say otherwise.
Thank you, trustee. Chi Chester, sorry. Alrighty, we'll move on to consent items. Okay, does anyone need anything pulled? Are we early? Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at this clock here. Apologize for that, sorry. Trustee Magnotta, I'm glad you guys are here. Alrighty, well, we'll continue with our consent items. Does anyone want anything pulled off the consent? Being none? Okay, we'll go ahead and... Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I moved that we approved the consent items.
Okay, I need a second. Second, okay. Motion made, there was a second. We'll go ahead if there are any public comment on this item. Heather? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none. Trustee Lehman walked out, so we'll go ahead and say this vote went five to zero. Six to zero, sorry, everybody's here, I can't count. Thanks, all right. Moving on to item number... Item number three. Do we have anything for introduction and special recognition tonight? All right, thank you. So we'll go on to item number four, NASB. This is me, and I really don't have anything new to add. Every week or every month, I talk about the training that's coming up. So if there are some of you that need some hours of training, this would be a perfect opportunity you can get with Karen, and she'll give you the information about the upcoming trainings and the things that will be held up at the lake. Next is board reports.
President Gilchrist, just real quick on that. Just a reminder that by the end of December, each board member needs six hours of training. Several of you are there, and I'll send out tomorrow morning where you are on that. Most, I think, three of you have already reached those hours. And one is just like a quarter of an hour off, and then we've got some that need quite a bit of training. So I'll reach out to you in the morning and let you know where you're at.
All right, thank you Superintendent Lewis. Yes, and again, this is a good opportunity to get those hours. Item number five is our board report. I'll start down at this end, if that's okay, Heather? Do you have anything you'd like to report?
That I went to the part of the, what was it, the PDC? Is that what it was? PDC, did I say it? The epic forum, the learning forum. Yeah, I went to the learning forum, and it was great to see all the neat classes that were offered, and wish I would have been able to go to a few more, but was really impressed and enjoyed getting to meet the teachers in the district with us. Great job.
You. Trustee Magnotta, do you have anything to report?
No.
Nothing, okay, thank you. Trustee Engelker?
Yeah, I sat in on the, I guess, the Health and Sex Education Committee down at Indian Elementary, and then I was on the grading committee meeting, it was last week. Excuse me, there was one more thing, but I can't figure it out. Oh, yeah, well, we had expulsion hearing this morning. But, yeah.
Do you have anything to report about those committees that you'd like to share with the group?
I think we've got our work cut out for us on the grading. Yeah. Yeah, we're just getting started.
All right, thank you, thanks. Trustee Kengas?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Trustee Chi Chester?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Lehman, nothing? Okay. I have just a few things to report as well. I also attended the learning forum at the high school on the 28th of September, and it was actually put on by our teachers and staff. And I took some classes there, and I have to tell you, I learned a lot, and I enjoyed it, and yeah, it was really a good time. I know we're gonna try to have one again in the spring, and I would encourage anyone that's available. I know some people have to work during the day, but if there's ever a way that you can plan it to clear your schedule and attend the next one. I also did an instructional walk on September 30th at Scarselli Elementary School, and this is to... This is something that's enjoyable to do too. And again, if you get a chance, any of our board members, if we get a chance to go in and talk to the kids. And we're looking, we're talking about this epic learning that's in our school district, so... And you learn, and you can also, you know, you learn a lot about it just by doing the walks. Went to the barbecue on last Saturday, and that was a lot of fun. And then last night, we did our virtual recognition ceremony, which was also a lot of fun, and... And yeah, just it reinforces what great teachers and great staff we have here at Douglas County. So that's my report.
I'm gonna add on there. Mr. Trustee Jackson was part of the grading committee. I have to be your memory, which is not good. My memory's so bad. And then I do appreciate trustee Lehman and Kengas also joining us for the barbecue.
I'd also like to say that I viewed the awards. I forget the formal name of it.
Employee recognition ceremony.
Employee recognition last night, and it was very good. A couple of technical glitches, everybody has to remind me.
We're reminded, it's better in person.
Very nice, yes.
Yeah. And trustee Jackson?
I just have one more thing, Keith. My memory is worse than yours. I just came from Sepphor Cove and got to see all the improvements there in the last five minutes and already forgot. But it was great to see what they had, what they had done, all the great work that the parent organization did. And it looks great. The kids are enjoying that, so thanks to Jeff for giving me a tour.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to good news. And that's me again. I have a couple of things here that I wanted to share. Did I pass? Oh, correspondence, sorry. I was in such a hurry to get to my part. Correspondence, does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share? Received any correspondence?
I can, I can share some. I've got some emails. One was from Dr. Turner, had to do with myocarditis and vaccinations. Virginia Star on CRT and Paul Jensen on CRT.
Okay. Anyone else? We probably all, most of us received that.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you for bringing that up, though. All right, we'll move on to the good news. And this is something kind of new that we've started. We're putting articles in the paper because our school district does so many wonderful things to share some things. And this is what it looks like, I was just gonna not seen it. I'd be happy to share it with you. Pass it around so you can see what's involved with it. Melissa Rains is in charge of this, and you're doing a great job, Melissa. Thank you. So yeah, this news, this one is about CTEs and where we're placing some of our students in the community for, to do, that's what I'm looking for. Internship, I guess you would call it, so I can pass that around. Look at it. Something else I'd like to share, and the reason I'm sharing this is because an anonymous donor treated our school district, our district office, to lunch one day in September. And we don't know who this is, so I thought... They put out a thank you card, so I wanted to read it to this anonymous donor, and hopefully they're listening. It says, "To the amazing family who treated the district office staff to a delicious lunch today. Thank you!" Exclamation, exclamation, exclamation. "This very thoughtful and generous gift couldn't have been more timely. As a staff, we've enjoyed lunch outside together for the first time in a long time. We enjoyed fresh air, time with others, and a truly delicious meal. Thank you for spoiling us." DCSD District Office Staff. And then it's signed individually by, I'm gonna pass that around to people in the office. And the last good news thing I'd like to share is I ran into a gal, Sherry Mitchell, at the picnic. And I don't know if you remember, those of you that were here a year ago, she did a presentation about her program, and it's called PAC, which stands for Partners Across Community. And she writes, "As you recall, Jeannie Dwyer and I gave a presentation to the school board last December outlining the purpose and goals of our new program. Last year was a challenge in launching a new program, given the restrictions of accessing the community. However, we are pleased that we are able to begin our partnerships by safely accessing the community." She highlights one of her people that she works with, Teresa Freitas. She says, "As a seasoned special education teacher in DCSD, joins the PAC, joined the PAC program this year. She has been instrumental with her vision for young adults with disabilities, being productive members of our community. She embraces fostering independence to enable PAC members to be successful. On a daily basis, she and her student employees attack work readiness skills, practicing in the classroom, and applying the skills within the community. The PAC program has been to Jay Fraz's Desert Stream Farm for an agricultural and nutrition field trip. The students, employees will be returning later in the month to assist with the fall garlic planting. Lynn Larson has also welcomed us to Volunteers, to Volunteer at the Backpack Buddies. This facilitates social skills, organization, and giving back to our community. Rounding out our new community partners is the Listo Pencil Company, a locally owned family business that ships products around the world. They have given us the opportunity to assemble product components in our campus lab and as a way to support learning new job tasks. Jason and Stan Pearson look forward to eventually having student employees at their facility. The student employees of PAC have created the following vision statement. So this is their vision statement. We go to PAC so we can learn responsibility to develop good character and learn new things, so we can help others and develop work skills to gain employment, so we can enjoy a quality of life. They have also created several standard operating procedures, and that's part of Epic, to help them build their independence. We would like to update you toward the end of the semester as we access more opportunities within our district and community. Within the district, we will be supporting Science, the Science Resource Center, the district warehouse, and various school sites that have job exploration opportunities. The student employees will also be launching a small business. It's called Coffee Vendor Venture later this fall." I know she invited me out to the school, out to the high school, to observe, and I know she would love for any and all of us to take time maybe to go out and observe what they're, what great things they're doing. Thank you. That's the end of my good news. Item number eight on our agenda is consideration of bond refinancing for discussion and possible action.
That's just...
Have you go ahead and introduce yourself, please? Your trick here? Can you hear me? Okay. Because of the interest rates that we have had over the last couple of years, JNA really has, is being an active bond consultant and actually trying to maximize our savings and also to refinance current bonds that we have at a higher interest rate. This, what is the 2012, the documents that you were given have changed a bit, John will talk about that. But John is here from JNA, and they are... And he'll actually discuss this and kind of give you, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. For the record, John Peterson with JNA Consulting Group. And if anyone can't hear me, please just let me know. So as Sue mentioned, this is another opportunity we looked at to refinance debt for the Douglas County School District for debt service savings. And maybe just off the bat, for the board's benefit and for the public's benefit, the district's debt service is paid from a specific 10-cent levy of property taxes that was approved by the voters. And this, the savings that would accrue from refinancing debt stay in that debt service fund and in the district's capital projects fund. So there are no savings to the general fund. All costs of paying this refinancing are paid by the proceeds of the bonds and stay within the debt service fund. So I just want to make that abundantly clear. You know, these are not savings to the general fund. I think sometimes there's some confusion about that. As Sue mentioned, we are looking at refinancing some of the outstanding bonds of the district. Specifically, there are portions of the district's 2012 and 2013 bonds that we're looking to refinance. In the agenda materials, there should be a one-page summary that shows what we're looking at refinancing, excuse me, approximately 7,130,000 of bonds is what we're looking at refinancing from the 2012 and 2013 issuances. Those bonds are payable over a period between now and fiscal year 2034. We would replace that with a new bond with the estimated interest rate of about 1.6%. That compares to about 3.6% that we're paying currently on those bonds. So that's where those savings are accruing, is between that interest differential between those, between the old bond and between the new bond. We're expecting that there will be about $800,000 in savings. Obviously, we still need to take this out and bid it and bring the results back to the board for approval. We anticipate that that would be brought back at the meeting in November. Excuse me. You know, really just the savings would be to match the term of the old bonds. We're not extending the final maturity. And I think that's really the high-level summary of what we would do. And I would just pause and see if there are any questions from the board or otherwise.
Trustee Engelker?
Yeah, what's the refinance cost? Is it, you have any idea?
Talking about transaction costs? Yeah. We anticipate the cost would be about $123,000. And again, those are paid from proceeds of the bond. So they're not paid from any funds of the district unless the bond goes forward and is successful.
Okay, did you have your hand up? Trustee Lehman?
What is your firm's fee for this? And how do you come up, and how do you set it?
My firm's specific fee out of the 120... So there are various fees that are paid. There's my firm's fee, there's a bond counsel fee, that's a legal fee. There are some other transaction fees. Our anticipated fee is approximately $35,000 to $40,000 to do this. It is contingent on the successful closing of the transaction. And really, my firm's job is to provide that market intelligence in terms of when the refinancing can be successful, to help the district with sending out the request for financing proposals, to receive those back, to evaluate them, to give feedback in terms of which proposal is the best. Generally, when we send out these requests for proposals, we'll send it out to 30 or so banks and other financial institutions. And sometimes we get various interest rates, and we also get other terms and conditions that the banks may want. And sometimes those terms and conditions aren't compatible with the district's goals, or they're just not compatible with Nevada law. And so we evaluate those proposals. And sometimes we may say that, you know, Bank A may have the lowest interest rate, but their terms are not something that we would recommend. And so we would say, in that case, maybe go with a higher interest rate just because, you know, it better fits in with the goals of the district. Does that answer your question?
It did. It led me to another question.
Okay.
How do we, as a district, I assume you're not the only firm that does this? How do we, as a district, choose who we work with for stuff like this?
How we originated with JNA, John, you might have better information because that was all Holly. But we've had this firm for a long time. Their fees are minimal, and the only time they charge us is when we do actually refinance a bond or... And I don't know how many firms out there do this kind of thing. Maybe there's a lot, maybe there's not. But we have contracted with them for years. And they just are bond consultants. And anytime that we have potential savings, they do all the paperwork. They do the, you know, and John is on the phone talking to me every day about what I need to pay, or, you know, anything that's an ACH, you know, payment or something, we just do. So I really don't know, Rob, how we would actually do this. We'd either have to go out to bid or something for a proposed, you know, bond counsel.
Okay, thank you.
John Peterson with JNA, for the record. You're correct. There are other firms that do this business. It tends to be state by state, and so within the state of Nevada, in addition to my firm, there are two other firms. And between those three firms, due between, I'd say 99 and 100% of municipal finance work in the state of Nevada. In terms of JNA's relationship with Douglas County, Marty Johnson, who is the president of our firm, has worked with the district. I hate to say it, since I was probably in elementary school, since the late 80s and early 90s. And so that is a relationship that we value with the school district going back many, many years. And that really is kind of the foundation of our relationship with the district. And Sue mentioned, you know, depending on who the finance staff are, going back to Holly or even before, our job has always been to advise, to give our best input in terms of what we think the district ought to be doing in order to be successful, whether it's with refinancing in this particular case or if there is a desire to go out and finance new projects. That really is our goal, is to make those efforts be successful.
Are there any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Magnotta, go ahead.
What is, what are bond rating?
The district's current bond rating? The district is rated by S&amp;P and is rated double A minus. And so the double A minus for the, for the public's benefit, for the board's benefit, the scale starts at triple A, which is the highest rating, moves down from there. There are three ratings, and then what we call the double A category. Double A plus is the highest of those three. Double A minus is the lowest. And really, I think what's most important to kind of take away from this is in, you know, the district is the fourth highest rated category for debt. And it's also what we call investment grade rated debt, which is a very good rating to have. It's a rating that the district has had for many years. I think it really speaks to just the overall strength that we've had. So I think that, does that answer your question?
Yes, why is our rating lower?
Why is it lower than the triple A? I think fundamentally, it just has to do with, some of it is the institutional framework in Nevada in terms of the financial opportunities that are available to school districts. So there is that impact of it. They also look at things like the district's general fund, you know, concentration of taxpayers, et cetera. But I think some of it really just has to do with, or I'd say primarily has to do with how districts are funded and operate in the state of Nevada.
So what would be your suggestion to improve our rating?
I will say that there are things that we can do to improve the rating. However, the, what I will call the marginal benefit of those is somewhat limited. So in general, if we were to go from a double A minus rating to a double A rating, I would expect that the interest rate on bonds that we offer, and these will be prospective, so this wouldn't affect any existing debt. It would only affect debt going forward, would decrease by five basis points, which is five one-hundredths of a percent. That's what we would see on the decrease by increasing the bond rating just one notch. In terms of what we can do, I think fundamentally the biggest issues that are within the district's control, and I would say only partially within the district's control, would be fund balance, general fund ending balance. And so that's why I'm hesitant to say that what you ought to do is to stop spending money and increase your fund balance because there is somewhat of a marginal benefit to doing that in terms of, you know, it just, you know, not having a huge impact on the overall financing costs of the district. But that would be the single biggest factor that would, you know, increase the district's rating. There are other factors that we could look at. You know, diversification of property tax, property taxpayers, that's not really within the district's purview. You know, whether there were other changes that Nevada was willing to give districts more control over their finances could be potentially another one. But really, in terms of what's, you know, under your control, it'd be increasing the general fund.
Trustee Lehman?
Yeah, I think I'm ready to make a motion, but I think maybe the suggested motion is wrong. We're not approving actually refinancing. We're approving for you to go out to market, right?
Yes, we're asking for feedback and direction from the board.
So I'd like to make a motion that the district work with JNA Consulting to see what kind of refinancing is possible for our 2012 bonds and to bring back those potentials.
Okay, motion was made?
Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any public comment at this time?
Just maybe, just add for the next board meeting?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible.
The timeline...
As soon as practicable.
Yeah, as soon as practicable. I mean, assuming that we move forward with this tonight, we would anticipate that we would send out the bid to the banks by the end of next week, have those bids back in time to present them to the board meeting in November. And trustee Lehman, if I may ask, just one friendly amendment to your, to your motion. We are looking at refinancing the 2012 and 2013, portions of 2012 and 2013 bonds. I know the way it was written in the agenda was just 2012, but it is our current plan, and would ask if that is acceptable to also look at refinancing the portions of the 2013 bonds as well.
Just take your second back, Doug.
I'd say...
Oh, sorry, do you want to hear?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the district work with JNA Consulting to go out to market to refinance our 2012 and 2013 bonds and bring back any potential refinancing to the board as soon as practicable.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All, we'll go ahead and public comment on the new motion. Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thanks, John. Thanks, Sue. Okay, next on our agenda is our superintendent reports. And I'm gonna turn this over to Superintendent Keith Lewis.
Thank you. Like to start off, Douglas County School District would like to acknowledge and thank Nomno Bor LLC, which donated approximately $4,000 in equipment for the culinary arts program at Douglas High School and to the Tahoe Douglas Elks Club for their donation of 372 dictionaries for distribution to all DCSD third-grade students. Within the consent item, agenda, let me back up and try to speak so you can understand me. Within the consent agenda items, you were provided a copy of the DCSD enrollment counts through the month of October. Our October enrollment count was 5,409 students, which is up to students from the September count and just six under the count from October of 2020. So enrollment continues to look good. And the projection to the People's Center Funding Plan was 5,412. That's what our enrollment, we're almost right there on that, which will be nice down the road. Brian Fraser sent each of you a copy of the DCSD Board of Trustees Annual Evaluation of the Superintendent, which will be part of the November 9th, 2021 board meeting. That's just a friendly reminder to complete the evaluation tool and enter your data into the online data collection tool by Thursday, October 21st. As always, if you have any trouble or need assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to Brian Fraser, who's overseeing that. And then when you're finished, if you can just kindly let Brian know that you submitted it, then he, that will help him for his tracking purposes. I don't know that I let you know this, but DCSD Director of School Nutrition, Brittany Mally, submitted her resignation to accept a promotion with the Nevada Department of Agriculture in the role of School Nutrition Supervisor for the state of Nevada. So Brittany will go from the position of just overseeing ours to now overseeing all school nutrition programs in the state. So we're excited for her. She was hired in this role in December of 2017 and has done an amazing job building a self-sustained school nutrition program. Participation rates have risen dramatically under her leadership. When she took over, we were serving approximately 200 students at Douglas High School. That number has grown to 500 and had already started to significantly grow prior to all students receiving free lunch. She successfully secured many grant funding opportunities to update lots of our DCSD kitchen equipment, and she led dramatic changes in how we have served and just distributed food over the past 18 months. And as we've lived through COVID, we sure owe a debt of gratitude And as we've lived through COVID, we sure owe a debt of gratitude to her and her department for going from a food service to a food distribution model really seamlessly overnight. During Brittany's time with DCSD, she has been fortunate to be supported by SMP Coordinator Jordy Foster, who has also played an instrumental role in the success of the program. We conducted interviews yesterday for the vacant SMP director position. And I'm excited to let you know that I will be recommending Jordy be hired as the new director of SMP, which will appear in the November Personnel Report. Jordy has worked eleven years within the SMP department, started as a dishwasher and has worked her way up and has served as the interim director on multiple occasions over the last several years. So she is extremely qualified and this will ensure a smooth transition within our program. As of last night, Douglas County School District has had 250 COVID positive cases based on home rapid antigen and PCR test results. At this time last month, we had approximately 215 cases. So you can see that number is significantly slowing down. We currently have eight active cases in the school district with three at the elementary level, two at the middle, two at the high, and one considered a district-wide position. As you know, Douglas High School and Powell Lou Middle School were considered to have outbreaks at the end of August. That designation was lifted effective September 29th. So at this point, face coverings are highly encouraged, but not required at any of our DCSD schools for students. They're still required of our staff. DCSD was notified it is receiving $693,201 from the FCC Emergency Connectivity Fund. This funding will be used to purchase seventeen, 1,786 Chromeback, Chromebooks, seventy hotspots with one-year service and six school bus wifi systems, also with one years of service. And over behind you, I'd like to acknowledge John Enter, who continually does a masterful job in securing any funding that is available for technology. So thank you, John. Great job. Last night, DCSD, as you mentioned, celebrated our amazing staff for the virtual employee recognition ceremony honoring the 2020-21 DCSD distinguished employees. While I intend to honor them at our November board meeting in front of you, I wanted to announce a few of the recipients from last night. The DCSD distinguished service provider trainer went to Susan Hartunian, who works as a behavior specialist in inclusive education. The DCSD distinguished classified supervisor is again sitting behind you, Mr. John Enter. Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees Award for Excellence in Leadership, which is given by the board, went to Ernie Montfleto, who was, has retired and is former coach and teacher at Douglas High School. We had to trick him into thinking he was presenting me an award last night to get him on from South Dakota, but it worked masterfully. So good job, Mr. Gardner. In with us today is our DCSD Distinguished Administrator of the Year, Mr. Bill Harvey. DCSD distinguished support staff employee is Kelly Hayes, who is a visual impaired educator, works with student with Braille services. Kelly Hayes is at Scarselli Elementary. And the DCSD distinguished educator went to Melinda Nylander, who has taught thirty-seven years at Minden Elementary School. And I can speak from personal experience, I was fortunate to have three of my kids have her as a teacher and she does an amazing job and has always done an amazing job. So I'd like to thank the man to my right over here and our benefits and risk, Mr. Joe Gardner and our benefits and risk management coordinator, Leanne Carries. They do all the work behind the scenes to make the ceremony possible and did a great job. There was quite a lot of shenanigans going behind the scenes to get people into the appropriate places and to be able to recognize and make sure that everyone was home or whatever location they were. So we did put a notice out to the sheriff's department that if they saw any crowds of people to move slowly, it could be our employees lurking in the dark, waiting to knock on doors. Several of you have mentioned that we held a very successful DCSD learning forum on September 28th, which provided professional development for all DCSD employees. We were fortunate to have Katie Martin, who is the author of Learner Centered Innovation as our keynote speaker. We were able to offer approximately eighty different session topics, most of which were led by our own DCSD staff. Linda has already acknowledged it due to the success. We intend to hold another one of these in March. March 7th would be, if you're putting anything on your calendar. And then I'd like to thank two of my executive directors are sitting in the back of the room, Shannon Brown and Rami Cronin-Mack. They do all the legwork in putting that together and did a masterful job as well. So thank you. This past Saturday, we were blessed with a beautiful fall day to host the annual district barbecue. I want to thank DCPA, DCSSO, Chapter Six Bus Drivers and DCS, DCAA, all of our employee groups for their support of this event. Also want to thank our school sites and departments for providing amazing gift baskets for our raffle. We also raffle personal days where members of my cabinet and myself service the substitutes. I will be subbing for CBMS, ELL teacher Anita Swerengen. Now, we've done this four years and I have, she has drawn mine, or I've drawn her name actually, out of the hat twice. So probably what's the most alarming is that our human resources director will be substituting for Kelly McHugh, who was a kindergarten teacher at CC McNeely. So we all know where we're going to be that day to provide support for the students so that they survive. Update on district facilities, the warranty roof work, work at Jack's Valley has been completed. And the same work on CC McNeely has started and is anticipated to be completed by November 1st. The installation of a new single ply roof system on the 200 building at Douglas High School is also underway. Our request for quote for new architectural firm is completed with interviews conducted on September 30th. DCSD Project Mayor Scott McCullough will announce the results of the November board meeting, bring that forward to you. Our window film project installation is still ongoing. We have completed three schools, but product availability continues to hinder progress on that project. The district-wide security fence project is now complete and our facility staffs is working on the capital project list for the new architectural firm. So once we get them in place that they can begin, start planning phase in November for our future projects to make sure those are all put out to bid and ready to go by summer. Since the October board meeting, we have conducted instructional walks at CC McNeely and Scarselli Elementary School. The walks continue to be great and we are seeing great work in the development of learning center classrooms. And before I left to Boise on vacation, I, we walked Scarselli and I know Principal Susan McNeil's here tonight too. And we just had, we've had amazing walks. It was an amazing day. And I just, you know, teachers are their own worst critics and they're so hard on themselves and, and they're doing amazing things in their classroom. And so hats off. And I told Susan, she's hard on herself too, and she's got a wonderful school and should walk proudly for that. So those have been good. We're going to back up here on Thursday, walking our lake schools. I will be at Pinion Hills Elementary on the 21st and Carson Valley Middle School on November 8th. And as always, you're always welcome. If you, even at last minute, if you have open calendars, just let us know and we'll put you on a team and let you walk with us. We held our first two communication meetings this, of the year, last week, meeting with the staff at Jack's Valley Elementary School and the staff at our airport facility. It's interesting, they're always different. You know, the Jack's Valley, you know, there's lots of concerns. It's been, it's been a struggling start to the school year. Some pretty significant behavior concerns. And so we had nice conversation on, on that. And then at the airport facility, I pass this on to you because you ultimately passed it, but they are so appreciative of the, the snow removal equipment that we purchased up here for them last year and making their work easier. So we'll be meeting with staff at Pinion, MES, CBMS, Powell Lou and GS prior to our next board meeting. Just a couple of reminders in closing town halls. We'll be back here at George Wiltal High School tomorrow night for the town hall related to critical race theory. The town hall begins at 6:00 PM and our community will be able to participate both in person and Zoom. We also have a second town hall meeting related to critical race theory on October 21st, which will be held at Douglas High School. And these town hall meetings will be moderated by Lindsay Chichester, who was an extension educator through the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension. And this is a free service that they provide. We learned something new on this. We didn't know that was to be moderators was a service. So Lindsay's doing a great job of trying to educate herself on the topic and I look forward to her moderating those town halls. And then just a reminder, a very much needed October break is October 25th through 29th. So our school offices will be closed during the break and a district office will remain open. But many of our district office staff will also be taking advantage of the opportunity to get away for a little rest and relaxation. So that's what I have for the month. Any questions?
Ross, do you have a question? No, okay. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lewis. We'll move on to item number ten, which is our principal, principal reports. And I will turn this back over to Superintendent Lewis.
All right, so in October, we typically do our principal reports. We're going to do it very similar to we did last year and they're going to speak to the successes and the challenges that they've had. We're going to go elementary, middle, and then high school. So I believe presenting tonight for elementary is Susan McNeil, Principal of Scarselli Elementary School and Bill Harvey, Principal of Gardenvale Elementary School. And they'll be presenting on behalf of all their colleagues.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I want to thank Mr. Lewis for acknowledging Mr. Harvey's award. I've worked next to Mr. Harvey for four years and thank you. He deserves that recognition. So congratulations again.
We're going to have to ask you to speak closer to the mic too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And it was quite a surprise. It was a fun night. So on behalf of our elementary colleagues, Susan and I are going to be talking about our successes and strengths as we've opened this school year. And we'll be sharing that. And then at the end, talk about some of our challenges that we faced as we've started this school year. We'll start with CC McNeely Elementary School. Under the leadership of Principal Blaine Spires and Vice Principal Andrew Fromdall, they have a theme this year of explore more. Their classrooms are becoming more learner-centered and they're excited to have parents and volunteers back into the school. They had a sixty percent participation rate in the back to school night, which was held over six different nights, accommodating a different grade level each night. For Gardenvale Elementary School, which is now my home, under my leadership and for my vice principal leadership of Molly Ravenscroft, our theme is journey together. So in-person back to school nights were held over two different nights. We did a K2 night and a three-five and they were both well attended. Parents were very excited to be back into the building. Working, we're working on building positive classroom environments as part of our epic framework. And again, happy to welcome parents and volunteers back into the building. At Jack's Valley Elementary School, under the leadership of Pam Gil-Martin and Vice Principal Cresspin Escobell, they have a theme, a theme of embracing curiosity. They report a high attendance at their back to school nights. Each grade level was held a different night. And they're in the process of planning their student-led conferences for every grade level K5. Next, at Minden Elementary School, under the leadership of Principal Ken Stoll and Vice Principal Kelly Winter, they have a theme of rainbow of possibilities. They're excited and report that they are allowing more students, students more choice in their learning. And they held both in-person and virtual back to school nights and both were well attended. And they're in the process of planning their twenty-fifth anniversary celebration for the opening of Minden Elementary.
New school.
Okay, for Pinion Hills Elementary School, led by Mr. Jason Reed and the principal and Mr. Sean Bryan, the assistant principal, they are excited to have volunteers back in the building once again. Their second grade classes had an amazing event displaying argumentative writing at DST Coffee Shop on October 4th. Their students love the Douglas County Public Library Book Mobile, which is going around to school sites. And they are preparing their twenty-fifth anniversary celebration on November 4th. And they have a time capsule they'll be opening, which will be very interesting. At Scarselli Elementary School, which is my school and led by myself and my assistant principal, Molly Ravenscroft, our theme this year is better together. And our focus is on epic learning with classrooms becoming more learner-centered. We had a student-led back to school night, which was virtual and very well attended. And we are very happy to have families back in the school as volunteers. And we have our PTO back in the building now. So that's really great to have. Sephar Cove Elementary School, which is led by Mr. Mark Walling, principal, and Kelly Winter, the assistant principal. They have a very high level of focus on epic learning and staff collaboration. Their students, families and staff are settling in after returning from the evacuations for the, from the fires. Their school culture is positive and learner-centered and their volunteers and parent club have been extremely supportive. So those are the really, the great things that are happening in our schools and you see a theme throughout that of epic learning. Some concerns that we have as elementary administrators are student attendance, probably our biggest concern at this point. We had high rates of absenteeism. It's getting better right now, but the first two months of school, there were days, I know at my school, we had over eighty absences. And I have about three hundred and seventy kids and we've, that's unheard of for us. And it's difficult to find substitutes. That's the other issue we're having in all levels at classified and certified positions. We're really struggling with that right now. And I think that, I mean, that's a, I know a nationwide issue, so we're not alone.
Thank you. So now would be time for questions. Trustee Engelker.
Do you think the high level of absentees was from the smoke?
We're not positive, but I would assume some of it was from the smoke, smoke-related health conditions perhaps. We did keep kids inside. They did not go out for recess with certain smoke levels, but it could partly be due to that, yes.
Trustee, Angus.
It's kind of redundant, but was there any other theme that might have kept kids out, one that, that was a higher number of absentees?
We had COVID cases. I know at my school, we had several and we opted for a virtual back to school night because of that, because when we did have a few COVID cases. I mean, you get the COVID reports. I don't know that, it, I, I don't know. There was, you know, maybe other illnesses happening. Hard to say.
If I could weigh in a little bit on that, we've had five hundred and three close contacts, which means in some level of quarantine, which could be up to ten days. So that certainly is leading to some of these concerns. We do have a meeting on Friday with the governor's office and the Health and Human Services with the topic of the close contacts and the, you know, we looking at maybe that a little bit differently so that we're not putting so many kids out. And our, and our numbers in Douglas County are probably a lot lower than other districts, depending on what health district you're under. It is obviously a concern statewide when we got together in Las Vegas last week for state superintendents. It's, it's definitely a concern across the board. Number of days kids are missing.
Does anyone have any other questions? I just, I have one thing I'd like to just ask, and I know maybe you won't have an answer and that's okay. But seeing that one of our concerns, and I'm assuming that's for all our schools, the concern is absenteeism, is that what you were saying? Are we getting together then and brainstorming? I'm sure you are. I've just, I'm wondering, are we taking a specific time or taking this topic and possibly working on that or coming up, trying to come up with some suggestions or ideas? I mean, sprinkled in fairy dust? I don't know.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think we're taking it serious. It's why we've requested a meeting. And again, I mean, there's with the current emergency directive, where our hands are tied a little bit on that. And again, Carson City Health and Human Services has been, you know, they've been pretty conservative on not trying, you know, they're trying to balance that, keeping kids in school. And we're just, you know, we still are not seeing the spread within classrooms generally. And so, you know, there are some things we, we maybe not have a whole lot of control on. But again, trying to have those discussions at a higher level to maybe invoke some change, which then would, would help us. And it's an issue across the board. It's, you know, the middle school, high school could all sit up here and they have the same.
And we find it across the state as well. You're talking to other superintendents.
You're finding it across the nation.
Okay.
Absenteeism with COVID is problematic.
All right. Linda, I do have a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, are you guys seeing the same amount of parent volunteers that you saw pre-COVID? Are you seeing more parents come in now that they're able to come back in? Or has that been difficult to get parents back in the classroom?
No, it hasn't been difficult. Parents are eager to come. There are some parents, I think, that may be reluctant, maybe they Maybe they have, you know, for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but, but parents are eager to get back. For the most part, we don't, not had difficulty getting parents.
Nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill and Susan, we now invite Nancy White, Principal of Carson Valley Middle School, and Adam Dedman, Principal of Powell Lu Middle School, to present on middle school.
Hello.
Hello. Remember, speak right into the mic for us if you can.
Hello.
Roger that. So Carson Valley Middle School, here to celebrate some things. The epic progress on our learner-centered culture, which is at the forefront of the innovation that we're in our third year of implementation and following the roadmap. Now, I just looked this afternoon and we are higher than 73% in our vision. It's, I think, 84. So the numbers continue to rise. Teachers are on board and working very diligently, getting through their roadmap. So we're very proud of them. Our epic coaches are amazing. They are on our campus almost every day. Amy Hironzi and Chris Jezek provide a wealth of information and knowledge and support to all of my staff. So we are very much appreciative of everything they're doing for us. Obviously, we're very thrilled with all of our students together before the pandemic struck. Andrew Parrish is a brand-new art teacher. Right now, he's a long-term sub, but he's going through the alternative route to licensure program. And he is absolutely amazing, doing a fine job teaching art to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Very interactive, very inviting classroom. Every time I look through the windows, there's something new and exciting there. So I think Mr. Lewis can speak to that when he watched him back to school night virtually. Our STEM program is very strong. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students have access to STEM education as an elective. Mr. Gardner is working on electrical engineering and for the first term and electrical, no, mechanical engineering for the second term. And Mr. Carter is doing a fabulous job for our sixth grade students. So that's what you see there in our photograph. And I've been pounding the pavement, trying to get parents interested in participating in our Parent Tiger Group. I've had two meetings so far, and that's been a wonderful experience to have parents back at the table, talking with us and coming up with ideas on how to support the school. We've got some volunteers on tap for our pumpkin run, which is on the 22nd of this month. If you're able to come out during the day, kids have a lot of fun. They dress up and we have a blast. Family Bingo Night is right around the corner as well. And so is teacher, well, teacher appreciation is a little ways down the road, but we've got, we always have parent interest in that as well. Sorry.
Thank you. And am I advancing this, Keith, or are you? Okay. Okay, so I am. Watch out. Here we go. So celebrations at Powell Lu, we're also working through the epic learning and our teachers are engaged in that process. The greatest thing this year has been the addition of Jill Howe as our epic learning coach. And she is positively amazing, and she has made us all better, myself included. So thank you to Jill. From our site, we had five presenters presenting at the DCSD learning forum, so we're pretty proud of that. We're very excited that we have sporting events again. We have after-school tutoring again, which is very well attended. And we had our Powell Lu out again, just, oh gosh, was that last week? We had that. And which is a traditional event that's outside in the courtyard, which it was really nice to see the kids having some fun again out there. We have some new staff to share with you. Bailey Seaword, who used to be Bailey Gansberg, is our new sixth grade science teacher. And we just hired Gina McGill, an extremely talented educator, who's going to be our Title I interventionist. I think the thing that's most exciting, you know, project-wise at our school right now is the growth in the electives. And a lot of that grew out of the Project Lead the Way courses. And so what you see on the slide there is something created in Allison Meyer's ceramics class. Please don't ask me to identify what that is, but it is impressive. And then also something from the Project Lead the Way course, green architecture taught by Brian Mello. And, you know, two years ago, I had empty labs at Powell Lu. And now I have teachers fighting for lab space, so it's a really nice problem to have. And there's like, you know, golf stands and coat racks and ceramics. And there's just a lot of cool stuff that kids are making, so we're excited about that. We also have outdoor science going again. We've added art at the sixth grade level, so we're trying to have kind of vertical opportunities for kids to do these classes, six to eight. And then Nancy and I worked together to, to kind of catch our challenges. On the one slide, we found that we were really having the same challenges. And so it's a good chance for me to say how much I appreciate collaborating with Nancy and Josh. They're really, you know, helpful and supportive, so that's been good for us.
We like it too.
Yeah, I wasn't going to make her say that, but I thought she liked it. We are seeing increased discipline concerns and behaviors. Yeah, TikTok was not fun this last month.
I feel like, there's a feeling, obviously with, with some of our students, they really appear to be in a state of distress and despair. And I, and I think that we've got some parents that feel the same way. Certainly, the fires didn't help. The COVID, the Delta variant has not helped at all. And people are still uncertain about, you know, their finances and whether they're going back to work. There's a lot of stress in these homes. And, and we're seeing, we're seeing the brunt of that with, with a lot of our students. And it's just something that we're trying to get ahead of, but it's very difficult for us to do. So we're going to talk about a few other things that we, we think we can do, but it's, it's still very real in our, in our world right now.
This was, this is the biggest feedback that I've gotten from my staff is, you know, social skills that the students have in terms of coping and dealing with stress and dealing with whatever they might be addressing at home. We're, we're just seeing deficits in some, some abilities that we've taken for granted over the years. You know, that students know how to do this and that. And teachers are finding themselves explaining things to students that they didn't used to have to explain to students. And so, you know, we're both trying to get to the bottom of that, and we're both trying to leverage some resources to help that and to support the teachers and the kids.
I think with some, not to get into it too much, but I do think that, you know, the pandemic has, has had a huge role in the, the lack of students to be able to socialize. Even if they were able to be in school, like our elementary schools had their children there. We had ours every other day, but it still isn't the same. You know, even going out into the community, many things weren't available, sports weren't available. And so for children to be able to have that interaction with each other in all contexts of their lives really plays a huge role in how healthy their well-being can be.
And so each of our sites have advisory classes for the students twice a week. And that's something that we address in there, helping them with those social skills. Nancy alluded to it earlier, social media is a problem with a lot of the behaviors we've seen. I'm pretty proud that both of our schools addressed it pretty assertively when it started happening, and so it has tailed off. But that, that's been one of the causes. Question time for us.
I think, questions. Trusty Magnata, please.
You think that the social emotional learning is a good class? Is it helping the kids?
So it's not a class per se. It's a set of skills and abilities that we all have. And it's a, it's a, it's a set of vocabulary that we use to discuss those things with kids.
Correct. It, it's, we do social emotional lessons on Wednesdays during advisory for all of our students. And like what Adam said, their tenants, self-management, decision-making, responsibility, self-awareness, those are things that, you know, we all exercise as human beings. And a lot of these kids, like what we just intimated, they're struggling with some of that, with managing themselves. What do I do when I see a TikTok app? And, you know, I see all these, you know, kids that are the same age as me destroying stuff. Do I say no, or do I jump right in? It's that piece, that decision-making that, that they're struggling with. And they need to be like taught the ramifications of that and why, you know, what you see on a device isn't necessarily a good thing.
Is that it? Anyone else? Yes, Trusty Lehman?
Yeah, what's an example of, Mr. Dedman, you said teachers are explaining stuff to students that in the past they haven't had to explain. Could you give an example of that?
Yes.
Would you like to?
Okay, I'm thinking, I was buying myself a few seconds. I think in the slide earlier, we had compromise. And so the ability to negotiate with peers or with teachers. And so I think teachers have reported that kids will take something from level one to level 10 unexpectedly. You know, so if a teacher says, hey, can I talk to you in the hallway? They'll see a kid escalate way more quickly than we would have expected a few years ago. And I think this would be a good time to say, in this kind of meeting and this kind of presentation, we might end up talking about the problems we're seeing. But we still have so many great students and the vast majority of our kids are great kids. So, you know, obviously what we're addressing here are some changes we've seen in negative behaviors. But I didn't want to go without saying that, that, you know, so, so many of our kids are just great kids. And, and although they're all struggling, the kind of thing you're asking about, I think that escalation piece, you know, just regulating their own anger would be the best example of that.
And on the social media, what did they call that challenge again?
Devious lick?
That one. Did you find that there was any underlying connection of the type of students that engaged in that? Or was it all over the board or?
It was all over the board. Yeah, for us, I mean, definitely.
And then finally, if, if you've learned that the kids are lacking socialization, that's what they, that's what I took from your presentation. If I'm wrong, please correct me. But if I'm right, what things are being done to create that, those socializing situations?
You're asking us what we're going to do about it?
Yes.
Well, I know my counselors tomorrow during our advisory, they're going to ask all students to complete a very, very brief survey so that they can, you know, try and understand the data. And then there are some students that would definitely benefit from friendship groups or group, groups that involve grieving, students that are struggling with loss. So different types of groups that our counselors and our social worker can support these students with that wouldn't necessarily take them out of class. Of course, we'd have to get parental approval and support from that. But I think it would be time well spent because they need that ability to be able to see that they're not the only student that is struggling with a specific problem, that there's peers around them. And so I think that's one of the, the main things that we're going to start doing as soon as we get that information. That's just one small piece of what we're going to try and do.
Thank you.
And I know both sites are doing this. We're trying to create more activities, more fun activities for the students. We have a VIP week coming up at Powell Lu where students get a different reward activity each day for participating. And we're trying to encourage participation in traditional things like going to support your friends at cross-country meets and games and, and having dances and things like that. So we're trying to create opportunities for socialization. I don't know that we have, you know, a perfect remedy for it, but we're trying to get back to normal, to put it, you know, to put it.
Just from a personal experience, I feel like my kids have a lot of experiences in life. And they love whatever happens at school. They will tell us to not, no, we are not leaving town. We're staying home for the pumpkin run. Like, it, it is important. They love it, and so.
We love it too. I got to pull out my Cruella de Vil costume again.
Sounds good.
I'm sure they love it. All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll thank you very, very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Adam and Nancy, doing a great job. And then we have Aspire Academy High School, Jacobson High, Jacobson High School. DNO Principal Gavin Ward. We have Susan DeRozier as Assistant Principal at Douglas High School. And Mark Walling, Principal of our Lake Schools. And Principal Mike Rex is on the call. He had some family business, but he is available if we have any questions and is listening in, and John can activate him. So, sorry Gavin, are you not up there? Oh, we didn't give you three chairs. We can find you a chair.
He can have my chair when I finish.
All right.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Susan DeRozier. Glad to be here filling in for Mike. He regrets that he wasn't able to be here. Do you want to go ahead and go? So the first thing that is the best thing about what's happening at our school is that the students are back in school. We absolutely have to celebrate that they're here every day instead of on the hybrid model. And we're getting back to some sense of normalcy with our events. And school spirit is coming alive once again. Our athletics events are being very well attended. We had our dance, our homecoming dance, which was fabulous. We had about 800 students attending that, so that's about half of our, our student body. And the best part of it, we made something good out of something different. So it normally would have been held inside and it was outside, and it was a fantastic venue. It might be something that we continue to do in the future. We got to have our, I can't think, what's it called? For the football game pep rally, and that was outside as well. And I think that's probably something we'll continue to do in the future. Another celebration is that we have a lot of new staff, a lot of teachers who are very eager, who are very enthusiastic, and they're right on board with our epic learning. In fact, they're actually entering our school, having a lot of a foundation with that already. So it's a very seamless transition with our learning. Our facility, we're getting a new roof installed at the moment. We were able to cover over the science pit area. Let's see, probably the best thing of all is that our culinary department is getting a brand-new kitchen. So that's very exciting. The students are happy about that. And then for our CTE program, we have a new class for our CTE pathway, and that's a multimedia communications class. It's been very well received by the students, and that involves elements of social media, video production, graphic design, and website design. So those are just a few of our great things that are happening right now. And are we doing positives all the way through for all of us?
No, it's not clicking. John, it's not clicking.
Okay, so I'll go to the challenges and we're in a different path. Well, the first one, I'm not so sure how to say this one. It says that we have three new administrators. I am one of those new administrators. I'd say the challenge there is just that we're all new and we have to get to know the system and one another and how well we work together. So there's that. But Mike did say that we are all doing a great job so far, so I'll take that. So we have myself, Sarah Sparhawk, John Glover, who is our new athletic director and dean of students. And that, that's where we are with our administration. A big problem that is occurring is that we have had students who've returned from the online program or students just really coming back after the pandemic, and they're entering school very credit deficient. And so that's an issue that we are addressing. And it's something that we have to continue, it's probably something we'll have to be working through for a few years to come. We are also focusing on our epic learning journey and getting all of our teachers on board for learner-centered classes. But we're making great progress there, and we have teachers who are on the way to getting there. So we're just really happy that students have the option for some more voice and choice. And it's just becoming more learner-centered in the high school area.
All right, let's, we'll just pause right there to see if anyone has any questions for you. Hey, Mr. DeRozier? Yes?
Can I just ask, what things are you guys doing for the large amount of students that are credit deficient?
Absolutely. So we also have a credit recovery program. Absolutely. So we also have a credit recovery program. And so students, if they are motivated, they're able to in one semester, complete two classes. So we do have three, three sections of that at the moment. Our counselors have all met with students and their families to let them know where they stand at the moment. And if we're able to capture students who are, you know, maybe coming in as freshmen or they're sophomores or juniors who are credit deficient. We're able to put things in place and have them capture those credits a lot sooner. The biggest challenge would be our seniors who are credit deficient. And all seniors have to graduate with 23 credits. And if they are so far behind. You know, we have an option for, you know, they can do summer school as well, or they have an option to apply to be a fifth year, fifth year student. But we have a lot in place to get them. We're also doing, we're going to be starting Wednesday School. Which is a program for students with any failing grades. And they'll be able to receive help and instruction after school for that program. So we really want to put these things in place because our goal is to have our students graduate. That's our ultimate goal.
Do you have a number of how many seniors are?
I don't have the exact figure with me now. And I'm not sure if Mike would have that on the phone right now either, but I mean, it's certainly something we could get right away. But with me right now, I do not have that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right away till the end. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to George Whitel. Thank you.
You're staying here. Yeah. Everybody, I'm Mark Walling, the principal of the Lake Schools. And if it's okay, if it's appropriate, I have this prepared, but also have some comments just on Lake Schools in general that that I'd like to add live in. The first one, just as the new principal here and coming from Douglas High School, it's fun to see some of these successes and celebrations. And I hear about homecoming week bringing 800 students and we recently had our homecoming dance as well on Saturday. And we had about 80 students. It was amazing, but it was definitely a little bit of a culture shock. So we had a great time with that. Just like we've heard a handful of times up here already, we're excited that everybody's back in the buildings and everybody's back and settled from those fire evacuations that we had up here. We closed for a week with the evacuations and when we opened back up that Wednesday, it took a little bit of time for some families to come back and settle. But I feel that that the atmosphere of the school has calmed and everybody's kind of back into that routine. So we definitely want to celebrate that. We're making great strides with respect to epic learning. At all levels at the high school, they're working very hard on their tiles. And as I walk in and out of classrooms, the beauty of a small school is you get to walk into classrooms frequently, see most of them on any given day. And so you can see the progress and talk with kids and understand really kind of what they're doing and what they're working on. And so we've seen some great growth and that would extend down to the elementary level as well. They've really done a great job. We're working to build connections and strengthen collaboration with our staff members and many of them have reached out and built some connections with Valley Schools. One of the things that we identify is that you may be in a department of one in a small school setting. And so with a single department, like a one teacher department, it's important to have some of those resources. And as both Kelly and I come in, we have some of those connections with with Douglas High School for our secondary staff. And I know that, you know, a lot of our elementary teachers have reached out as well and built some connections at that learning forum. That was a great positive experience for them. This year, we've welcomed the sixth grade class up to Whitel High School. And so they are here full time with us. They are the only class that is more or less, I guess, self contained. Where Dr. Hope teaches our sixth grade group and goes through the same class exchange every, you know, every period, but they go back to her for for all the subjects. With the exception of PE and Spanish where they go see Ms. Nightingale. But it's been great to have them them here. They've kind of added another level of, I feel excitement and energy in the hallways. They sit and kind of in a spot, they've been working their way into some of our pep assemblies. We've had two and they've brought a lot of energy. And so the rest of the group wants to keep up with our our sixth grade group. So it's pretty fun. We'd also like to welcome Cynthia Peterson. She's our new counselor. She's done a great job. She's been learning an awful lot. She's covering K-12. And learning the standards as well with Castle Standards and working with our elementary school and giving them some of those SEL lessons as well. But she's really been working hard up here to learn, you know, Nevada expectations, Nevada standards and what graduation requirements are for students. How we can support them at a small school and facilitate some of the, some of the struggles with some online courses and a lot of edge annuity opportunities for students that may need some help. But she's really been doing a great job to learn that she's been well supported with other counselors in the district and has done a great job so far. And then Alicia Braxma is new to us. Also, she's teaching English and she comes with a very strong background in education. And she's already proven herself to be a pretty significant leader, I believe. We've, we've had some conversations and I feel like she's extremely strong as an educator and has a great future here with us. Some enrollment numbers as far as here at Whitel High School, we are at 161. We had a new sixth grader enroll. And then we've also seen some enrollment numbers grow. So I just I listed those with us. So we have 19, well, 20 now in sixth grade. 33 seventh graders, 28 graders, 28 ninth graders, 14 and 10th, 26 and 11th, 20 seniors. And then our future warriors are fourth and fifth grade, fifth grade. We have 33 of fourth. We actually had a new enrollee also. So that is up to 24 students. So we're growing. We're excited and really kind of looking forward to what is to come. Some of the challenges that we've seen, staffing is one and it's, and it's a small school. It's a small area. And sometimes, you know, we joke a little bit that we are looking for unicorns. When we first got here, we were looking for, you know, somebody who was certified English, social studies and. Trying to think of the third one that they had. I don't want to say that it was a fine art or something. And so it was drama. And so we're looking for for folks that need to wear many hats. So we've been able to consolidate and we've been able to make some of those hires. Currently, we're looking for an art teacher that is a position that's shared with both high school and elementary. We've got it filled with a long term substitute who's doing a great job. Some of the art that you can see posted in the hallways at Zeverkov especially, they've been working on some watercolors with some place based. Themes has been really cool, really fun to look and watch and see what those kids can do. Substitute teachers have been a challenge. There've been a lot of unfilled jobs that have been supported by teachers on prep. We've had administrators filling in as well. It hasn't been terrible. We've been able to fill, you know, many of the jobs, but when they are unfilled, it's that scramble. And I think that that's kind of a bigger issue than just at Douglas or at Whitel High School. But you know, we're working through it and it hasn't been, you know, huge downfall, but definitely something to, that's been a concern every morning. We look at who's missing and make sure we know that we're able to fill those and how we're going to go through that. We're concerned about lack of participation in athletics. This fall, we lost two of our teams, just two, two non registered. We had a few number of football players register and same went for boys soccer. And so it's tough to lose and make those decisions that we just don't, we can't support those programs, can't force students to play. We want it to be something that they're interested and want to do. The irony of that is that the feedback that I get from staff and when I go and and visit our, you know, I was at the dance on Saturday. And when I'm in the pep rally is the school spirit is unbelievable through homecoming week. It was great. We're just not seeing that same participation in the handful of our sports. And so we really want to try to work and I've talked with Coach Bryant. Just about some plans on how we can try to build some interest, you know, and see what we can't do to get some kids involved. It's one of those things that I value is extracurriculars and co curriculars is a way to tie kids into school. And so I know that it's something that we want to keep working on. I believe that's what I had as far as challenges. Are there questions for me?
Trustee Lehman?
One of the concerns that the Lake community had. Was having an administrator at both buildings at all times. And that apparently that didn't happen a little bit last year. How has that been able? How's that working this year?
So we've, we've worked, and I say we, I'm talking Kelly and I, Kelly Winters, the vice principal up here. We've worked hard to work on a schedule, build a schedule on when we're both here. We both are up at the lake on Mondays, Thursdays and Fridays. And so with Fridays being Zeverkov only, we're able to work and collaborate, get a lot of administrative duties together done. But on those Mondays and Thursdays, we're able to alternate sites and bounce back and forth and make sure that each site is covered. On the other days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, when it's just me, I've leaned heavily on Coach Bryant and Cynthia Peterson, who bounced between each site as well. I know that Phil has jumped down to to Zeverkov several times to to help with supervision, things like that. But as far as, you know, my ability to bounce back and forth and support both schools, you know, I could say that today, I was down in the valley for some interviews today. And, you know, missed a chunk of the day, but I was still able to see both sites for a significant amount of time, interact with kids, catch up with teachers. So I feel like it's been supported. You know, if I get a phone call that that something is happening at one site, it's a pretty quick jog down the track. Or, you know, it's a quick hop in the car and I'm there. So it's not anything that we haven't been able to handle. You know, I would thank our secretaries as well. They've done an amazing job of being able to manage some of those things. And I say some of them, I can count them on one hand. I think there's been three times where I've been called to a different school just to address or help work with, you know, a student situation, something like that. So it really has been manageable. I think the challenge personally is is learning, you know, K-12, working with K-12 expectations. Rather than secondary expectations and or elementary expectations. But it's something that, you know, I'm here for. I want to learn. I want to succeed and I want to thrive at that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from our board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Mark.
Did disappear. All right, I'll see you guys. John, do you have my for the? The next slides for Aspire and do you know? Thank you, John. Thank you, members of the board for having me. My name is Gavin Ward. I'm the principal at Aspire. And just some of the celebrations for this year, we have two new teachers. I have Dr. Will Norris is a math teacher. He used to be at Jacobson High School last year. He's come in, he's connected with my students and he's working hard to try to figure out ways. For kids to access math. I've got Dr. Lear, the principal here at Whitel last year. He is my social studies teacher. And he has jumped in, he's connected with the kids, he's looking at. Some project based learning. He's doing a great job kind of learning what Aspire is about and connecting with our kids. I hired Ms. Sanchez. She's a new aide we grabbed from Cars and Environment Middle School. Thank you, Nancy. She's does a fantastic job. She's bilingual, super hard worker. And then we also have Ms. D'Angelo. She is our WNC teacher. We are, we have a WNC course that's kind of a college prep class. Our students are able to take a WNC course. And we're hoping next semester that our students will be able to have a art class in the seventh year and also get college credit for that. We had is called Retreat, which our retreat is kind of a team building, two days of. Kids getting to know each other. We were fortunate to have probation officer Dominic Hastings come over and he ran. Probably sit helped helped us run six different kind of team building sites outside and you can see the pictures of our kids. Kind of learning to work as a team. We also had a tug of war competition. Which the teachers, because we're heavier, we won. And it was a great, it was a great day. Our kids kind of opened up. And kind of talked about what Aspire is about and truly being a family and. Other kids were not working on that day for with edgenuity, they're starting to catch up. It was a great day. So that's the celebrations for Aspire. Challenges. So our curriculum edgenuity is rigorous. And the challenges, a lot of these students are short credits. They're coming and trying to make up, we're trying to get them across. The stage with a high school diploma. But it's another challenge is that it's online. So you have students who are. They might have struggled in a regular class setting and we're putting them into an online program. And so the challenge is imagine being on a computer for five hours a day or. That's a challenge for probably any student. It would be a challenge for me if I was on a computer for six hours a day. And so what we're trying to do, we're trying to move towards a blended learning model, which means we've got Wednesdays and Thursdays are block days. And what we're trying to do is is supplement, remove curriculum from the edgenuity curriculum. And using the epic model, we're trying to present lessons that are learner centered. And trying to do engaging things with our kids. So they're doing, you know, more project based learning, hands on things that are off of the computer. The challenge is obviously to with online curriculum is you don't have kind of cooperation ability for students to kind of work together. So we're working on those Wednesdays and Thursdays. Of having students kind of work together and and that's what blending learning model is pacing. It's a lot, I have to say, it's, it's a lot of curriculum and it's a lot that our, our kids are having to go through. And so we're working with them, setting up plans, trying to teach them how to. I don't know if you'd say teaching grit and showing them, here's the plan. This is what you need to do to get through there. But I think we're making good progress and really excited for what we have coming with kind of epic learning and. More kind of learner centered activities on our Wednesdays and Thursdays. You guys have any questions for Aspire specifically before I go to Douglas and Nevada Online?
How many students are enrolled at Aspire?
We have about 70. Or 70. About 37 seniors.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to let you know, we have to take public comment in about four minutes. Okay, so if you, if you need more time, we can stop and you can come back.
I do not need more time.
I want to give you a heads up, Gavin. All right. Oh, sorry, another question.
This is a question for Gavin, maybe for someone else who knows ingenuity too. If a kid were to work on one class, one class only, he's just working on an English credit. He did that all day, every day. How long would it take him to get that credit or her?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks.
The courses and they range from about 40 hours or some classes up from 55 down to like 40 some odd hours. So if you're figuring.
Forty hours that they need to log on the, I thought Rami might be stepping up for this.
I was just going to add that. That is, that is an approach that we can take according to our plan with the state around distance education. Students would have to complete the coursework in six weeks. That's the state law. So Gavin's correct, Mr. Ward is correct that most students should be able, if they worked on it constantly, be able to can complete a course in about four weeks. We see that success happening in summer school. Summer school is a little bit different because many of those courses are credit recovery, which are a little bit shorter. And students have already been able to have those courses. They should be able to demonstrate mastery quicker. So some, like I said to you in our summer school report, I had some students that completed three courses in the four week period. But the state puts a window of six weeks is the the end point for students to enroll in that way.
So my question is, and we're at 5:28, so if you don't have enough time. Seeing as we have so many kids that are credit deficient, right? When we went to the balanced calendar, one of the things that I read at least was schools like that. Because hey, we've got a week here that we can pull kids in and we can help them. We can do an intensive, right? We can get them a credit. I'm just curious if that's, and we haven't done that here yet, maybe because we haven't. I'm just curious if that's, and we haven't done that here yet, maybe because we haven't needed to. And I'm just curious if that's something we need to look into. Obviously, teachers have time off and we need to, we need, you know, we need to address that, we need to offer something to give them there. But that's just my question. Or maybe it's just a comment.
We also have credit recovery classes. So if a student has previously been in the class and put the seat time in there, they take a course and they can test pass things. So as they go through the credit recovery course, if they know the material, it moves them through quicker. So a kid on a credit recovery class can move much quicker. That's one positive thing about a kid, credit recovery-wise, is they can test out of that material and finish it more quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to have to stop for public comment. It is five-thirty, then our agenda. So, oh, thank you. Okay, let me go through this with you. So comments are, comments from the public are invited at this time on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. A sign-up sheet was provided, and individuals who wish to address the board are asked to indicate their desire to speak and the topic about which they will speak. Individuals wishing to address the board at this time will be limited to three minutes. The board is precluded from acting on items raised during public comment and are not already on the agenda. So, and I say this every month, but I know sometimes people come up and ask questions and whatever, and we cannot answer. It's not because we don't want to, but we're precluded from doing, from acting on anything said. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Trustee Kangas, who will explain the three-minute rule, what to expect.
So Trustee Ticester is in here who'd normally do this, but a three-minute limit. At two and a half minutes, I will raise a yellow card, and hopefully that gives you enough time to wrap up. And at three minutes, I'll raise the red card. Doesn't look like there's a lot of speakers, but.
I don't know what we have online. Okay, thank you. So our first person that we'll bring forward is Bob. If you could come up and state your name, and if you could please speak right into that microphone for us, Mr. Bob.
Bob Russo, for the record. I'm speaking out against vaccine mandates for our youth and children, which I believe will be knocking at our door sooner than later. The survival rate for children with COVID-19 is high. According to the CDC, the survival rate without treatment is ninety-nine point nine-nine-seven percent for those under twenty and ninety-nine point nine-eight percent for those between the ages of twenty and forty-nine. And their likelihood to pass it to others is very low. The potential adverse side effects from the vaccines far outweigh any benefit our children would receive from them. Scientists know now that the spike protein produced by the injection of genetic material, messenger RNA, doesn't stay combined to the injection site, but travels to various organs throughout the body, including the ovaries, the heart, and lungs, where it can cause inflammation and tissue damage. There have been cases of myocarditis among young boys and men receiving the vaccine. If severe enough, it can result in lifelong damage to the heart. Another concern is that the spike protein concentrates in the ovaries, which could make young women and girls infertile. And we still do not know whether the vaccine affects the outermost layer of the placenta that is responsible for passing nutrients to a developing fetus. Shouldn't we have answers to these concerns before vaccines are given to our youth? I think so. According to the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting Data, System Data, as of October 1st, there have been sixteen thousand three hundred and ten deaths, two thousand four hundred and fifteen miscarriages, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight heart attacks, eight thousand six hundred and eighty-nine cases of myocarditis and pericarditis, and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twelve permanent disabilities from the vaccine. A report submitted to the Department of Health and Human Services in 2010 concluded that fewer than one percent of vaccine adverse events are reported by the VA system. In 2019, we lost two hundred and three people to the flu vaccine that reaches approximately one hundred and sixty million Americans every year. So the adverse side effects that we're receiving with the COVID vaccines are huge and are a big deal. Given our children's extremely high recovery rate from COVID and the known adverse side effects from the vaccine, it is our duty and responsibility to stand against any mandates requiring our children to get the shot to attend school. We, it's up to us, we have to protect them. That's our duty and our responsibility. And I have something I'd like to pass out to all the, I'll just pass it to you, and if you could just pass it on, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Bob, for coming up and speaking. Do we have anybody online, John? We have one. Okay, if there's anyone online that would like to speak, you're going to need to raise your hand. Is that what you said? Okay, we'll take not, someone that's zooming in online, Carly Strauss. Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Carly. Go ahead and get your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Carly Keister Strauss. I work in the Professional Development Center here at Douglas County School District. I am a Douglas High School graduate. I was a valedictorian of my class. I worked as a math teacher at Pawaloo Middle School. I worked as a school counselor at Kingsbury Middle School, where I was named Teacher of the Year. I worked as a school counselor at Pinion Hills Elementary School, where I was named the Nevada State School Counselor of the Year. And I now work at the Professional Development Center, where I was also named the distinguished trainer for Douglas County School District. I say this so that you can understand that I have poured my blood, sweat, and tears into Douglas County School District, not only as a student, but as an employee. Recently, some of the work that I do has come into question. And I thought, rather than letting someone speak for me, I would come today virtually, albeit, and share with you very clearly what I stand for in the work that I do, so that you hear it from me. I first and foremost believe in having kids in school every day for their mental health, for their well-being, absolutely. I also believe that we need schools where every student feels seen and heard and valued. I believe in kindness and respect. I believe in modeling that and teaching that and living that for adults and students. I believe in bringing cutting-edge neuroscience and brain research into our classrooms as we modernize them and make them the schools of the future for our students. And I believe in equitable and inclusive learning communities. And by that, I want to be very clear in what I mean. I don't mean taking away from some kids to give other kids more. Mind you, I am a parent as well. I have an eighth grader at Carson Valley Middle School. Everything I do, I'm doing for him as well. I don't mean all kids get the same thing or the same outcome. I don't mean that either. What I mean by equitable learning communities is removing barriers that prevent kids from accessing their bright and beautiful futures, whatever that may be for them. And so that really is the foundation of the work that I do in the Professional Development Center. If there are ever any questions about the work that I do, I welcome those. I welcome those conversations. That's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carly. Thank you for taking the time to speak today. Next, we'll take another in-person, and we'll take Ms. Lisa. Hi, Lisa, if you could go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, thank you, I'm Lisa Kirkman. And my daughter is a ninth grader at Wattel. We've been here since, well, at the lake since kindergarten. And I did, I mostly signed that because I thought it was the sign-in sheet, so. But I did have a question for the board. I am curious what the process is to revise the calendar at Wattel. I recognize it is a hotspot, but I counted up on my fingers that before AP tests, which are outside of our control, generally in the middle of May, Douglas High has thirty-three weeks of education, and Wattel has thirty-one weeks. This year, we lost an additional week, again, outside of everybody's control, but it starts to accumulate. And I, I remember when my daughter was in fourth grade, I asked, what's going on with the calendar? How do we revise that? I went to, you know, administration, I went to the board, I went to our local representative, and I didn't really get an answer. So now it's quantifiable. And I wanted, I wanted to understand what the process is. Okay.
There you go.
All right, thank you for hearing me. And I am very, very glad that the board is moving venues and including the schools and being onsite. I think it's terrific, and it increases accessibility by the community to the board. So, thank you very much, it's acknowledged.
Thank you very much for your time, too. Next, we have somebody that's zooming in or online is Jess Schnell. Are you there, Jess?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jess Schnell. I am the president of the Parents Club at Zephyr Cove Elementary. I'm so sorry I'm not there in person, since you are up here at the lake, and I'm having to still zoom in, but it's tough with dinnertime and little kids. I just wanted to say thank you for coming to the lake and for all of you responding to my email, inviting you to see our new play space. It was, I had an awesome visit with Heather, so thank you again, Heather, for the time to do that. And Linda, I look forward to meeting with you tomorrow and with Keith to show you all of the awesome improvements to the outdoor facilities that the Parents Club has been making over the last two years. The school is coming a long way, and I feel that we have a new energy with Mr. Walling and Ms. Winter now leaving the school. It's so nice to be in person, and we have our new Walkathon coming up and a new event next week that's a trunk-or-treat. So it's really nice to see the community rebuilding itself after COVID and the fire and all of the previous rumors and things. It feels totally different and exciting. And so I'm excited that you guys are here tonight, at least to be able to experience Wattel. And hopefully you guys will all be down at Zephyr soon. And I'm happy to meet with any of you whenever you guys have time to kind of tell you more about what our Parents Club is doing. But just wanted to zoom in and say we appreciate you, and thank you again.
Thank you, Jess, for taking the time to call in this evening. All right, next we have David, is David? Yes, if you could come up, David, and state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is David Seet. My topic is critical race theory. The illegitimate senile tyrannical occupier of the White House has mandated that CRT be taught in the nation's schools. Biden appointed Merrick Garland as the nation's attorney general at the Department of Justice. At the request of the National Board of Education, he has tasked the thoroughly corrupt FBI to intimidate parents and outspoken individuals against CRT. My hope is that this board, as a tentacle of the National Board, you will not invoke this abuse of power. Over the past few months, as COVID brought classrooms into the American homes, parents learned that their children are being taught critical race theory, i.e. whites are evil, blacks are pathetic, and magical thinking about gender, as well as being forced to wear masks that don't protect against disease, but do interfere with children's health, learning, and socialization, which the topic was addressed by different people at this table earlier. That is one of the problems with the socialization of these children, is these face diapers that you are mandating. The vigorous complaints saw the National School Board Association suggest that they're domestic terrorists, and Merrick Garland answered the call. Now we've learned that Merrick Garland's son-in-law, through his company, Panorama Education, sells CRT materials to public schools. And yesterday, this is not yesterday, yesterday, but it, previously, it turned out that Pamorana, Panorama, is also spreading material calling Trump and his supporters white supremacists. That would be me. Alexander Tanner, a very white man, is married to Merrick Garland's daughter, Tanner, co-founder of Pan America Education, which purports to provide data, to provide a data platform that delivers into students psychological issues in order to help schools intervene in problems and improve the school climate. In a word, it's creepy. This is what they say. "We believe Panorama is strongest when our team reflects the tremendous diversity of the students, families, and educators we serve." And then it goes on to say that Panorama in a workshop provided that the rise in images of overt white supremacy in the media feeds into the confusion about white supremacy. While the Ku Klux Klan and MAGA's at-half-empty Trump rallies are in fact an example of white supremacy, they are, they are not the only examples, so.
David, your time, I'm sorry to stop you, sir. I apologize, but your, your three minutes is up, and thank you for being here. All right, do we have anyone else online? Nope. All right, anyone else? That's everyone that signed up. Did you, would you like to come sign up, sir? All right, go ahead and please state your name for the record and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, hi, my name's Larry Sidney, Zephyr Cove resident and father of a four-year-old and a two-year-old, who will be up here soon enough. I know it all happens really fast. I recently traveled out of country to Denmark. And in going to that country for the first time ever, the biggest shock that I got was when I walked out of the airport downstairs to the train station, and almost nobody was wearing a mask. And I thought that was interesting. And then throughout my time in Scandinavia, I noticed and found out that they don't wear masks in schools. They don't wear masks in restaurants. I mean, occasionally people will have one, but they don't need to, for sure, that there's really nowhere that they're using them. And there are no mandates for such masks. And it made me reflect on what could possibly be so different. Well, it turns out that in Denmark, the vaccination rate among eligible people is extremely high, much higher than it is in the US. So it strikes me that in that country, the population has made the decision that they will protect their children, that they will do what they can do personally to protect their business owners, to protect their schools, to protect their places of worship, that they are taking that responsibility very personally. I've seen in our town and across our country very much that people would rather lay that responsibility for protecting our kids at your feet, at the governor's feet, at the president's feet, rather than taking on that responsibility as a community for ourselves. I see people that put that responsibility to you as a school board and to the administrators and the teachers and the school staff. And yet, they're the first ones to question the techniques that you need to use to keep our kids safe. And I'm very frustrated by that. So I'd like to see a little bit less finger pointing at the Board of Ed and up the line. And I'd like to see more of our community and people in other communities in our, in our country and in our state figuring out what we can do to help keep everybody safe, to keep our kids safe, whether it's being vaccinated or taking other steps that we can take. I think it's wrong-headed to be pointing fingers at everybody else when we're in the middle of a pandemic. I will close by saying I greatly appreciate what you guys do for us, how much crap you guys take, and how you take that, and you keep coming back to do your job on our behalf. I really appreciate that, that cannot be easy. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Larry, for taking the time to speak. All right, is there anyone else? Maybe? No? Maybe? No? I guess we're done. So, public comment has now ended. So, we'll go back to Gavin, we'll go ahead and go back to your, let you finish your presentation. And thank you for being patient with us and waiting.
Your friends did you?
Of course, I knew that.
Oh, thanks Mark. He was gonna be lonely.
Test, test. All right, Douglas Nevada Online. So, celebrations, we have four veteran teachers that have experience in the Edgenuity Program. They were working last year with us. And they're doing a really nice job with our students. We have about eighty students at Douglas Nevada Online right now. Which is a lot less than last year. Our teachers have a real strong understanding of how the program works. They, they know what students need to do in order to be successful. The curriculum is, is very rigorous and we're seeing a lot of success in our, in what our students are doing. Our pass rates are looking at where our students are as they're progressing is very high right now at DNO. Next one. Challenges, the curriculum is rigorous. So, our teachers are working with our students. They set up every single day. They're running Google meets with students. So, if they have any questions, they have the ability to meet with our teachers. Our teachers are they can meet with them in the afternoon. They're really reaching out and making sure that our students are doing things need to be successful, taking notes and kind of providing them support wherever they need it. We're looking at Epic Learning and trying to connect the things that are happening in Epic Learning with the things that we're doing at Douglas Nevada Online. We're gonna be sending out another survey trying to see what is it that students want and what do parents want? Because kind of the question of why is it that you decided to use DNO is, is pretty important to what, we don't want to provide something if that's not what they're looking for. We say like Epic Learning and learner-centered lesson plans. One of the tough things is students don't have an opportunity to collaborate. So, we're trying to figure out ways that we can set up groups and have kind of that discussion that we think is important for students to be discussing curriculum. And kind of sharing the work that they do. Because we think that's important for them to look at what other students are doing. And so, we're working on trying to provide opportunities for that.
Do we have any questions? Okay, Trusty Engelker?
What was the enrollment pre-COVID for DNO?
So, at one point last year, we were over a thousand students.
I know, but before.
Pre-COVID, we created it for COVID.
So, I'll give you Jacobson High School as well. I didn't create a slide for that. We're at, we have eight female students out at China Springs right now. They're using a Edgenuity curriculum with a Edgenuity teachers. And we have eight out there and our students are are earning credits and learning out there. And we're hoping for some more students. We get students kind of every other week. So, hoping to grow there.
I didn't get the count on the students.
So, right now we have eight students out at Jacobson High School.
Girls, right?
Girls and they are, they are bringing back boys to the program.
Oh, they are.
Yes. Should happen soon.
We're expecting boys at any time.
When?
Next week.
Okay, wow, that's soon. So, what will will there be instructors from the school district then back to China Springs now?
We are.
They'll still be all doing DNO.
They will be running an Edgenuity teacher and then we have an aide out there that's helping students move through the curriculum.
Okay, and how about the four that we, the four veteran teachers? Is that the total number of teachers or do we have some that are not veterans?
So, at DNO, all four of them had experience from last year in DNO. So, we have one teacher that it's fourth and fifth grade. And she's also supporting sixth and seventh grade, social studies and science. And then we have a teacher that's doing math and science for eight through twelve. And we have another teacher that is running English and social studies for grades six through twelve. And then our, we have one other teacher, Point Six, that is running the electives in DNO and also running alternative education, which we currently have four students in our AlTED program.
Can you tell me what electives are offered? I'm just curious.
So, we have, we have some things like career it's called, it's called it's career exploration for the middle schools. We have PE. We have French because we have somebody who can speak French. We don't have a ton of electives in, in DNO. That's one of the challenges we, we have.
I was just curious, that's all.
We have health, we have art history.
And these are electives?
And those are all electives. I'm drawing a blank on the rest.
That's okay, you've given me plenty. Thanks. Does anyone else have any questions for these guys? No? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you gentlemen. Didn't get a thing Susan.
Do we need to take, do we want to take a break? Five-minute break? Okay, why don't we go ahead? It, it, what time is it? It is now five fifty-five. We're gonna take a ten-minute break and we'll be back at five after. Thank you. All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order and let's see, we finished principles. So, now we're on item number eleven. Which is the timeline for future board discussion related to critical race theory. And a standing item and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Lewis.
Yeah, this is just a standing item that we agreed to at the last meeting. Obviously, our intent was to have already had a town hall meeting or two before we got here. And due to scheduling, trying to get everyone, as many people as possible, we just haven't had our first town hall meeting. So, it's a standing item. The board could take action. We can bypass this. It's really up to your, your fancy. But this will stay on the agenda until we get to the point of, we feel like we've addressed the issue.
Alrighty. Does anyone have any discussion about it?
Yeah, I have some discussion on it.
Alright.
Across the nation, there's been a number of schools that have basically outlawed CRT in their curriculum. And that was passed by the courses, school board, the administration. So, it's been highly publicized that it's not good for our students CRT, so.
I feel like maybe we need to wait until we have the two town hall meetings before we decide how we want to go about having it as an agenda item. So, maybe we could go ahead and have it. We have a town hall meeting tomorrow night, we have one next week. And then for next month, this would be on there again. And then we can talk about how we want to have it on the agenda. But we kind of need that input first is, would be my, my suggestion is maybe wait.
So, you're saying at the November meeting, decide how we're gonna do it in the December meeting?
I think that's what we would have to do, unless you feel like, like we're ready to decide how we want to go.
Well, I think we, I think we can discuss impartial actions in the November meeting.
Okay.
And if we need to, we can push that.
Okay.
And so, keep it as it is.
That is, that's still the standing motion. So, if there's.
You have anything you want to add?
See the town halls as well. It, it's possible that after the town halls, we'll feel comfortable moving forward and we'll have that option in November. It's possible that after the town halls, we'll want further information. We'll want to do a survey or something like that. So, I would just, I, I think our November agenda item should be broad enough that we could take action and broad enough that we could ask for more information.
So, do, do we need to?
Is it something that you'd have, we, someone make a motion to table it or is it?
I think it's just gonna always be.
I think it just stays here. This is just.
It's gonna be a standing agenda item for your request last month.
So, we just leave it.
When we've had agenda items, usually have somebody speak on the topic more than just a three-minute public comment person. Is that, how does that, who facilitates that? Who chooses that?
So, again, I think my intent or what I'm hearing and confirm if I'm right is that we, we would move forward with town halls. And then in November, we would discuss what, what does that look like? Do we, do you want me to bring a resolution for it? Do you want to, you know, talk about it from a pros, cons? So, again, the board kind of providing some direction on that is what I'm, I'm not trying to put up roadblocks to anyone. I'm just trying to follow the lead of the fancy of the board.
My question is, is when, when, when we brought up the comment about the survey, you brought in the people that put the survey on and had them give a thirty-minute presentation. Can we have somebody give a thirty-minute presentation on CRT at the next meeting?
Well, again, I think that's at the board and we need to vet what is that presentation on if we're having somebody present.
But how was it determined, how was it determined that the last one who was gonna do the presentation about?
Because that was a state survey. So, we brought the people who from the state developed the survey, analyzed the data. That's why we, that's why we bring them in because they can speak specifically to that survey results that the board wanted.
Geez, I got close, sorry. Trusty Lehman.
My understanding of how that happens, and, and we went over this in our, in that little workshop that we did. But either the president or the superintendent can work together to bring somebody in. Now, if one of us from the board would like someone to come in, right now, this agenda item would be the time to make that motion. Like if you have someone you want to present, make the motion and then we'll see if it passes. And if it does, then that person presents. And if it doesn't, then they don't. So, that, that's my understanding.
So, what I'm, but also I'd like to add that we would like to wait until we have our, what I'm hearing is we'd like to wait until we have our two. Heather was saying, have our two town hall meetings before we decide if we need someone to come in and present or not. To see where we're at after the town hall meetings and we either educate ourselves on it or, you know, we're all on the same page or whatever. So that we can move forward. And if we need more, if we need another, you know, more information than, other than what we're getting at the town hall meeting, then yes, that would, that would have to be stated and then, you know, you would request that and it would have to be voted, voted on, seconded and voted on.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm fine waiting till the next meeting to decide if we should do that for the December meeting. As long as we can discuss it at the next meeting.
And it will be, and this is what it will say right here. This will, exact thing will be back on the agenda in November. Alrighty. Any other comments?
I just suggested.
I guess, I guess I do have another question and I, I asked you about this today. But I wonder how long we're gonna allow people to speak? And I know you said five minutes, but I kind of wonder, like, if we have hundred people sign up to speak and we do five minutes. Yeah, that's a really long meeting. Part of me wonders if we shouldn't set it a time, like a maximum time for the meeting. This town hall will be two, two hours and we can ask people to sign up and then we divide two hours by how many people sign up and that's the time we give. So that, I guess that's my only concern. If we're telling people five minutes and we have a ton of people, you know, I, I lose effectiveness after a while. I'll be honest. I want to give everybody who speaks a fair shake.
That's a nice thing that we're gonna have two of them as well.
We are. So, can I speak to that? So, in our discussions with the moderator, I think she has a plan because this is what she does. And so, her plan, as she expressed to me, is obviously to set ground rules of what the night's going to entail. And again, giving her the leeway, we can certainly see how it goes tomorrow. But like, so what she explained, and Joe, you can kind of correct me, we had a conversation with her. Is, you know, what is critical, you know, what do you believe critical race theories? I think that's one of the questions that we have as a board. What is our community believe it to be? And, and using post-it notes and then people, and so it's more an interactive process where then she can group things by, you know, this is, this is a grouping, this is a grouping, and then have the opportunity then to speak. And, and what I would encourage of the board and my staff is that we sit amongst the people. So, we don't structure like this where it's us versus them. It's, we're here to have a discussion about critical race theory and let the moderator lead us through that process of which she's trained to do. And then, you know, if, if after that first one, we're not comfortable with that, we can always make a dap and give her feedback for the twenty-first, if you want to see any changes in the, in the way she does it.
Have we set a time limit on this meeting?
So, she, that was the question she asked. Just because of the way we have to time things, it says it's six to seven, but I told her she has leeway. You know, she want to know, she figures the way she's planned it, that it'd be about an hour and a half. But I told her she didn't have to stop at an hour. That's just what we have to do to kind of give some semblance of a timeframe. But that we weren't, but we also don't want to go all night either.
Can we do a maximum?
Yeah, we, we certainly, I mean.
Two hours max.
Two hours sounds good to me.
Yeah, I agree. I have a question. Is, you know how when we have a public comment here, we can't discuss it with them. Is this town hall different, isn't it?
Totally.
Totally.
Yes, it's, this is a back and forth. This is a, you know.
Well, I, no.
I, I, I say, I don't mean that.
I think, again, I, I think what you guys have expressed is that that we're listening, but we can interact, we can ask clarifying questions. You can participate in the activities that she does in terms of what, what do you believe critical race? So, I think, yeah.
Somebody specifically asked a question, we can answer.
Yeah, yes, certainly.
Yes, it's not like public comment Doug, you were asking. It's not where we have to just sit and listen. That's not the way.
And you're answering as a solo board member.
So, the way I understand this, this meeting is gonna be on, it's not gonna be a board agenda thing.
No, it will be. It's a public meeting.
We will still call the order, we'll still do the pledge because we'll, there'll be more than three of us.
We'll have public comment on items that are not on the agenda and then it's a one agenda item is, is the. And so, we do, it will be a public meeting. We've noticed it. It will be available on Zoom and in person. And then my staff will help John, will have the chat open for this so that people can participate and my staff will help take their thoughts off chat and get them, you know, whatever the moderator's doing. So, we'll kind of be filling it out with everyone else as we go through it, but.
And then we'll, yeah, we'll see how it goes. And the nice thing is we have one a week later. We can alter it if we need to. Go ahead Rob.
So, do we want a motion on a time limit or do we just, are we just all good with agreeing in two hours?
So, I think because it's not a gen, can we do it in this item?
It says process. Process and timeline.
But just. But. If they were to, to speak. So, so you guide us on this, is that also a motion they can do at the start of the meeting? That tomorrow night, at the start of the meeting, they can take action that it's gonna be a two-hour meeting. This is the process though, so I think we could do it.
Not on the, not on the.
I think the question is, because it's been agendized that everybody who wants gets five minutes, are they? Can we change that now that it's been agendized?
Yeah, but, but again, we can, I believe again, it's not guaranteeing that everyone has five minutes. It's if people talk, they have a maximum of five minutes. So, within, within whatever format she uses tomorrow night, if she chooses to and I, people will have an opportunity to speak, but then that would fall within that.
Let's see what happens.
Yeah, I think, I think this is gonna play out and.
I think.
I mean, I don't think any, I don't think even the public wants to sit here for one.
Yeah, no, I think one item, one subject.
So I think, I think we'll be.
I said, let's see what happens.
And I have a draft agenda here for tomorrow. I'm not sure because I have to be final. Okay. The red lines in here were final then?
Yes.
Okay. So my thought on this is, um, even if it does say that it, there's a five minute limit, it, the, the verbiage is actually, it's going to be limited to no more than five minutes. So arguably you can make it less.
Yeah.
And, and it would be the moderator at, at the beginning. If she's going to set the ground rules at the beginning and they're going to be the same for everybody and we're not going to switch it in the middle. Then every, then everybody has them.
So you're saying she can, when she sets the ground, we'll say we, we, this meeting will be over by eight o'clock. You could say that and, and we will have another one like this the following week.
So if you don't get, if, if, you know, there's a thousand people here, it's going to be one thing. If there's only twenty, it's going to be another. We can't feel that out until it's here.
Good point, good point.
Okay, alrighty. So I think we'll just move, yes, I think we're just going to move on to item number thirteen. And it's designation of positions as critical shortage. Seems to be a theme here every month, running item. We'll have our HR director.
I was just going to say, you're probably going to get tired of this request, but it might happen again. Uh, I am asking that you designate. The position of English language and development teacher as critical need. Um, these positions are always hard to fill. We have one recently vacant, vacated in the last couple of weeks and now we need to try and fill it during the school year. Uh, so by making it a critical sort, shortage position, it gives us one more option to possibly hire a qualified teacher for this position. So I'm asking that you would consider making that a critical needs position.
All right, uh, trustee Lehman.
Make a motion that we designate English language and development teacher as a critical need shortage position.
Need a second? Okay, Heather seconded it. So any public comment? Anybody online? Okay, seeing that there's no comment. The board have any comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we're on to item fourteen, superintendent goal update. Superintendent Lewis.
So I figured before my evaluation, uh, that I need to bring in this before you, just a quick update, um, of the, my goals. Um. I even have an update to this. So in the blue, I just tried to highlight in blue. Hopefully you have the colors, um, so that you can see what was added. Um, in terms of our epic learning implementation score, my goal was to, uh, get to a three point nine. Um, we are currently, uh, even since I, uh, sent this in. Uh, we're currently at a three point seven two. Um, and so we're making progress. I didn't quite get to that goal, but, um, we have, uh, gone up a full point. Um, and with some completion of some more tiles through our administrative ranks, um, I would anticipate we're going to get close to three point nine here relatively soon. I think the big thing is, is that, uh, COVID shut down our instructional walk, so I'm really excited to be able to sit here tonight and tell you that we've got those implemented. Uh, that we're getting, uh, conversations on instruction. We're in the classrooms across the district. Um, and, um, several of you have attended those and, uh, we have those scheduled out for, um, every site. So you all can read, um, hopefully you have read it and if you have any questions, I'm certainly, uh, willing to answer those, um, rather than read this for you.
Okay, trustee, um, Kengis.
I'm surprised you haven't done anything this year.
Tongue in cheek.
I think I, I read everything and I think there's a lot that's been accomplished in a short period of time and with so much distraction, it's. You're doing a great job, Mark.
Um, does everyone understand? Did everybody get a copy of the? Of the, uh, instrument that we're using? To evaluate Keith? Is there any questions?
The form.
Yeah, the forms. Okay, and you, everyone knows that it has to be in by the twenty-first? All right, all right, just want to make sure.
He's got a hard copy if you want one.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next, we are in closed session. Oh, sorry, super, uh, super. Trustee Lehman.
I moved it forward recess to closed session in order to discuss management, management representatives pursuant to N R S two eight eight point two two zero four.
Second, you, second, okay, second by trustee Kengis. Uh, any public comment on our closed session? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We're in. Uh, we are coming back into closed, uh, from closed session. So we are going to move on to item number sixteen. Prioritizing agenda, possible items for future board meetings. We have the list. All of you should have that list in front of you. And.
Is Ross, is Ross still on?
I don't know. Had to go to dinner.
I, I just.
Had to go to.
I, I want to take mine off, but Ross seconded it. I just, I, I, I like our policy now. I don't think we should be. This is the, uh, what we can respond to, a public comment. I think that's just opening a can of worms.
He's looking at the la, you're talking about the last item as you don't want to.
You want to remove it?
I do.
But we, I think we have to have, do that with Ross, right? When both are on, so.
Certainly he'd be okay with it, but.
You can talk to Ross about it next time and we can do that in the next meeting. Okay, that'll be for November.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Fine, got it.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add, subtract? Sure, go ahead, Doug.
We, when we had the N, N A S B. Presentation and we were talking about what we're paying them and everything like that. There were some conversations, um, brought up about. Uh, the reason that we're members or why we should be members. And then there were some correspondence I received from the board, or I think we all probably did.
Mm-hmm.
Regarding hardly the, um. F E by FBI involvement and perhaps. Going after quote unquote domestic terrorism in, in parents that bring up. Opposition at school board meetings and she seemed very supportive of that. So I would like to motion to consider. Whether or not we continue our membership in N A S B.
So that would be, you want that put on a, we've already done this.
So, yeah, we had this discussion. That will, uh, Doug, be on the January when we would renew. So the board took action that, um, we would, uh. We would make an official decision in January. So that will be on the, uh, agenda in January for that discussion.
Quick.
What's that?
Already got it on there.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alrighty. Nothing else, we'll move on to our last public comment. And I don't think we have anybody online, do we, John? This is time for public comment. No one? Okay. So we'll close public comment and meeting is adjourned.